Hey, Michelle, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, did I send you the packets?
Uh, yes.
If you need me to, let me know.
No, just hang on a second, 'cause I have to, I can't access my email from this computer, so I'm gonna have to forward it to my other email.
Yeah, my computers, because it made me change my password, doesn't let me get into Outlook right now. Hmm? Meow at me.
Jeremiah?
Yeah.
Can, I have all the packets except the ZBA packet, can you send that to a different email?
Um, yeah, give me a second. I'll have to forward it off my phone.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, and it's not loading.
Um.
Oh, wait, there it goes, never mind, I got it.
Got it?
Yep.
It just keeps asking me for my password, and I don't wanna restart this thing, because it's gonna take two hours to start back. Use my house computer at that point. Um, I don't know if Greg's gonna make this, I'll make the planning commission, but I don't know if he'll make this one.
Okay.
A fair get grounds with Robin.
Does she have any problems?
No, she just wanted to show him, 'cause he's never seen her.
Oh, okay.
I told him, it's fine, I wrote these reports anyway, so it doesn't matter. Um, during the planning commission, I might need you to allow me screen share to, if we need to use GIS.
That's fine, I'm actually gonna make you a co-host anyway, just in case my internet, anything cute, I'll do that right now, so you should be able to do whatever you need to do.
Get your laser? Yeah, laser? Laser? Mean old laser. Me, no laser. Since I was down at last month's meeting, is it best if we're all on mute, or how is the best way to do that? You can mute yourself or unmute, I've, we made it so all the commissioners are unmuted.
To prevent feedback, the best thing to do is leave yourselves muted until you wanna speak, otherwise it tends to provide a lot of feedback.
If you hit Alt-A, it's a quick command to unmute.
Or spacebar.
Space is your video camera, thank you for telling me that.
Space unmute you, Jeremy.
Was it? My camera off.
Oh, okay. Huh.
And space doesn't do anything for me, Mike.
Really?
Really.
Okay, that works on mine, so.
If you hold a spacebar down, you unmute yourself.
Nope. On mine.
Hammer.
If you hear me telling my dogs to be quiet, then I have accidentally muted myself.
Hi, dogs.
My cat's chasing a laser, I hope she stays away from my camera. Well, according to the clock on my computer, we're at 6:30, are we waiting for anybody else at this time that we know of?
We have a quorum.
Then if everybody is ready, we will call this meeting to order.
Well.
I'd like to call to order the August 4th meeting of the ZBA. Everybody received, commissioners, I assume, have received an email with the information, and a hard copy came in the mail for me today, I assume they have that also?
Yes.
Can I address that part? Um, so I sent you guys an email, just to save on postage, if, I know some of you want hard copies, and that was requested last time, um, if you guys want them, can you guys email me and let me know, and then I'll have them waiting for you, um, but if you don't need them, we could save postage, and definitely help a little bit with our notices that we send, which is in the three to four hundreds at this point each month, just a, just a note on that, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
The first item on tonight's agenda, the approval of the minutes from the July 7th meeting, everybody had a copy of that, uh, once again, I was unable to attend, so I'll have to rely on everyone else for the information on that.
Well, on that basis, I would note the correction, that you did not call the meeting to order, that it was Vice Chair Veely in the first line there. Other than that, everything else looked okay to me.
If so, well, with that correction, I'll take a motion.
I would move to approve the minutes as corrected.
I'll second it.
Uh, all in favor, aye, raise your hand, whatever, we can see you, I don't care.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item in their new business, we have a request for 1215 Brookshire Drive for a shed over 100 square feet. Now, once again, before we get into this, I would like to mention that last month's meeting, I think you dealt with three of these, and once again, I was not in attendance at last month's meeting, so however you handled those last month, I'd like to be consistent in handling that, so maybe some of you who were there, or Cindy, you were chairing the meeting, can kind of work us through this a little bit of how you handled those?
We, we are not asked to approve or disapprove them, as I understand them, they have to come and let us know, but it wasn't really.
No, no, we do need to approve them.
We need to.
And we did approve all three of the ones that came before us last month.
But it's, it's not a variance, it's just.
There's no finding a fact, there's no finding a fact, that, as, as, doesn't specify a finding a fact. Um, this is also on the planning commission's agenda for this evening, as a discussion item to consider, I changed the ordinance that would eliminate a number of these, we would hope.
So we just, uh, did you go down to the staff review that I have in front of me here for our, for tonight's meeting, you just kind of went down through that instead of defining the fact?
Yes.
First of all, uh, do we have someone from that residence here that would like to just briefly tell us what it is that they're looking to do?
Sir, you're still muted.
Okay, how's that better?
There you go.
There we go, okay, uh, my name's Tom Hillibrand, my wife Cindy's here with me, she's the one that got me off on mute, thank goodness, um, what I'm looking to do is just to put a 180 square foot Amish made shed on the back corner of our lot here for storage of lawnmower and gardening supplies, and I've come to the commission, I guess, just for the variance, uh, I talked to Jeremiah, and he said it is requested, uh, any shed over 100 square feet needed to be approved, yeah, he did the, I read the staff analysis, I agree with everything that's on there, um, the shed will match the home, and he kind of highlighted everything, it's 18 feet from the southeast corner of our structure, the height is only 10 foot seven, and that it's made out of wood and vinyl siding to match our home.
Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
I'm having a hard time reconciling the two images that we have and making them, it's not clear to me where it's going to be in relation to the corner of the lot, are the, let me put it this way, are there any setback variances at issue with the plan that he has?
No, not an issue, um, he, he's far from, from being close to anything.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
No.
I see we have some faces in here that I'm not familiar with, I know notices were not about this meeting, is there anyone else in here, uh, right now that would like to speak on this item? I can't tell, Tom, are you trying to speak there, if you are, we're not.
No, 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 sorry, nope, I said my piece.
There's another Tom. Tom Byrne, I saw your lips moving, were you trying to speak on it, item, if so, we did not hear you. You are still muted.
Yeah, you need to unmute your microphone.
Yes.
There you go.
Very good, thank you, my name is Tom Byrne, I'm a neighbor of the other Tom, and I live at 1206 Trenton Road, which backs up to Berkshire address, um, I was curious, two things, one, um, I thought, so I was under the impression that Scott Ridge subdivision had a, a, a ban on sheds in their covenant, of the subdivision banning sheds, can you explain?
No, that was, excuse me, we did previously have that, but that was amended at our last meeting, and we have allowed it, that amendment is being filed along with the other amendments, or original restrictions, there are currently two sheds in the neighborhood already.
Okay, I wasn't aware of, of the, of the covenant being changed or removed, I don't have a problem with sheds, in, in, generally speaking, but a shed of 10 by 10, which is the size of the city, uh, does not need a various for up to that size, but I have a problem with a shed that's 10 by 18, that's, that's not a shed anymore, that's, that's to me is a garage, and, uh, I, I, again, I'd like, like to accommodate the, the need for a shed, but 10 by 18 is, is not a shed, it's, in our opinion, it's garage, and that's pretty, pretty good, pretty good sized shed, the, um, the majority of the subdivision, when we look out, as I'm doing right now, uh, there are no sheds in our view, and it does make for a, a, a good, much better looking, premium looking subdivision, um, is there any particular reason why you need a shed that size?
Uh, that was the one, my wife is going to have a small, I like, gonna say a little gardening shed, I do have a mower, I do own two lots, and that size, I felt that was going to be perfect to go ahead and house our gardening supplies and snow blower in it, um, we have a two and a half car garage right now, uh, we have no intention of storing anything but lawn and gardening supplies in it, it's, uh, going to match the front of our house, we have a colonial house in the front, in the roof line, and that was the shed they actually offered that size.
Which side will the doors open to, Tom?
Um, the, Berkshire, towards Berkshire, and then towards our house, there's a front door on it that will go towards Berkshire, and the one that our mower will go into then would be towards our house, in, none, none facing yours.
So the gable ends will be on Berkshire and back towards Trent Hills?
Berkshire, yes, uh-huh, yep.
Okay, well, um, the size scares me.
I, I went in and looked at many of them, you know, definitely, and in order to get a, a snow blower, and, uh, I guess a lawn roller, and a mower, uh, 40, you know, two inch mower to get into it, that was the size we felt we, we needed and wanted.
You got room for one more mower?
Um, no. Not without getting in trouble with my wife, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can jump in, um, so, in the next meeting, we will be discussing shed sizes, I, we've seen quite a few of these under, over 100 square foot, um, you're right, this would not be considered a shed, and what I'm going to propose, this would be more of a storage structure, um, we have residential zonings that are R1, 2, 3, and 4, our ones are larger lots, um, so something like this would be appropriate for the size of this lot, um, whereas an R4 is a smaller lot, so we, I'm trying to come up with a way for us to do percentages, that they cannot have a large shed on a tiny lot, he does have two lots, um, his lot percentage, he would not meet anywhere close to his lot percentage, um, I do agree that classification is a little strange as a shed, um, it's more of a storage structure, um, but realistically, with what we're, we've been seeing, um, and some of these ordinances that I've been looking at, almost 250 square foot is what a lot of cities are starting to go towards for storage sheds, um, and that would be, you know, pending our discussion, um, you know, a 200 square foot could go in an R1, and then 100 square foot for the others, and then over that, we could go ZBA, if that was, you know, the case.
For what it's worth, the three we looked at last month, uh, two of them were 240, and the other one was a 200 square foot one, and we approved those, and I believe none of them were a lot as large as the one we're looking at tonight.
Not, not at all.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Now, there are actually two lots there, and the one lot that's, is vacant, could always be sold later separately, and, well, again, I, my concern is that, that's a rather large structure, but, uh, I understand that the larger the lot, that the, the large, large structure does not as, not as imposing, I, I don't know what the long-term plans are for this vacant, for the, for the one vacant lot behind us, what's, what, are there side lot restrictions as, as to sheds?
No, Tom, I, I guess I'll kind of step in, we have no intentions to sell that side lot, we've merged the two lots together, as you can see, we've landscaped it.
Yeah.
We, we have no intention whatsoever to ever sell that lot, that's, this is our whole total property now, so just to kind of put your peace of mind a little bit there.
Okay, okay, I needed to know that, thank you.
Yep.
And, and answered your question earlier, uh, the sheds need to go into the rear yard of the lot, they cannot be on the side.
Okay, thank you, well, it can't be on the side, it has to go in the rear?
Yes.
The rear of the house, or the rear of the, of?
Well, it must be in the rear yard setback, though, it, it can't be in the front yard. Um, I, I would have to look to see if we differentiate from the side, um, but we've yet to have anyone put them in the side. Yeah, this actually one is 18 feet off of it, so it's behind my house, to that one side where he's talking about that lot, so you can see it from the front, a little, you know, portions of it there, I can't put it all the way back because of the swale that goes back there for the water.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, well, I appreciate the information.
Commissioners, any other questions, anything from commissioners?
No.
Cindy, just for my clarification, did you read through all these staff review, or did we just accept them as written last month?
Um, I'm trying to think, I think we just accepted them, let me go back to the minutes, oh, no, it's the, I'm getting confused with the dimensional variance that we also did, um, for the sheds, we did not, we put them on the screen, we shared the screen, so everyone could see them, but we didn't read through them.
Okay, at, based on that information, if the commissioners have no other questions,
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in. So in the next meeting, we will be discussing shed sizes. We've seen quite a few of these under over 100 square foot. You're right, this would not be considered a shed. What I'm going to propose, this would be more of a storage structure. We have residential zonings that are R1, 2, 3, and 4. Our ones are larger lots. So something like this would be appropriate for the size of this lot, whereas an R4 is a smaller lot, so we I'm trying to come up with a way for us to do percentages that they cannot have a large shed on a tiny lot. He does have two lots. His lot percentage, he would not meet anywhere close to his lot percentage. I do agree that classification is a little strange as a shed. It's more of a storage structure. But realistically, with what we've been seeing and some of these ordinances that I've been looking at, almost 250 square foot is what a lot of cities are starting to go towards for storage sheds. And that would be, you know, pending our discussion, you know, 200 square foot could go in an R1 and then 100 square foot for the others, and then over that, we could go ZBA if that was, you know, the case.
For what it's worth, the three we looked at last month, two of them were 240 and the other one was a 200 square foot one. And we approved those, and I believe none of them were a lot as large as the one we're looking at tonight.
Not, not at all.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
There are actually two lots there. The one lot that's vacant could always be sold later separately. And, well, again, my concern is that's a rather large structure, but I understand that the larger the lot, the large structure does not as imposing. I don't know what the long-term plans are for this, for the one vacant lot behind us. What's, are there side lot restrictions as to sheds?
No, Tom, I guess I'll kind of step in. We have no intentions to sell that side lot. We've merged the two lots together. As you can see, we've landscaped it.
Yeah.
We have no intention whatsoever to ever sell that lot. This is our whole total property now. So just to kind of put your peace of mind a little bit there.
Okay. Okay, I needed to know that. Thank you.
Yep.
And answered your question earlier, the sheds need to go into the rear yard of the lot. They cannot be on the side.
Okay, thank you. Well, it can't be on the side. It has to go in the rear?
Yes.
The rear of the house or the rear of the?
Well, it must be in the rear yard setback, so it can't be in the front yard. I would have to look to see if we differentiate from the side. But we've yet to have anyone put them in the side. Yeah, this actually one is 18 feet off of it, so it's behind my house to that one side where he's talking about that lot. So you can see it from the front, a little, you know, portions of it there. I can't put it all the way back because of the swale that goes back there for the water.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the information.
Commissioners, any other questions, anything from commissioners?
No.
Cindy, just for my clarification, did you read through all these staff review or we just accept them as written last month?
Um, I'm trying to think. I think we just accepted them. Let me go back to the minutes. Oh, no, it's the dimension. I'm getting confused with the dimensional variance that we also did. For the sheds, we did not. We put them on the screen. We shared the screen so everyone could see them, but we didn't read through them.
Okay, based on that information, if the commissioners have no other questions, I would be entertain a motion of how we want to handle this at this time.
Mr. Chairperson, given that the proposed shed or outbuilding meets all of the specified criteria in the ordinance, I would move for approval of the request for this particular project.
Do we have support for the motion?
Who's running the Zoom tonight?
Michelle is and I. It's kind of a, I'm learning it though, just.
I think I'd feel better about voting if we would share screen and share the staff review before we vote.
Yeah, Jeremy, I sent you a chat message. I don't have the packet, so can you share it on your screen?
Uh, yes, if you give me a second.
Or Greg, can you email it to me? I can share it.
It'll be really fast.
One I had was from last month, sorry.
Fine. All right, I'm trying to. I'm finding it. Send it to your work email?
You should, you could be able to do a screen share. It's page nine.
The problem is, is we have to change our password every couple months, and it made me change mine, so I'm remoted into my work computer.
Could you change it so that I can share? I have it pulled up. Can you allow me to share?
I just emailed it.
Once he emails it to me, it'll take me like, thank you. Just give me about two seconds here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
This is all above my pay grade, so.
Did you, Greg, did you send her PC too?
No, I think I only did.
I have, I have PC.
Okay.
The ZBA didn't have.
If we're not going to read them, I'd like the people who aren't commissioners to be able to see what we're looking at.
Understand.
Thank you. We'll be pros at this by the time we don't have to do it anymore.
Yeah.
It might speed the process, Mike, if you just went down through it and indicated the
Right.
what it says.
I, I could do that if that's what we need to do if we're not able to pull it up.
I'm pulling it up right now.
It's a long, it's a long page of fine print.
Oh, I'm thinking of the page nine, Mike, not the
Oh.
Not the ordinances, just the staff review.
Okay, sorry. I've got it if you want me to read it.
I've got it if you want me to share it.
Cindy, I don't think you can share because if she lets you share, then everyone can share.
Well, who's going to misbehave?
We've had it happen at Planning Commission.
Okay.
We've had that experience.
Yeah.
I believe she said she was just about ready to pull it up. I will start down through it, and then if she gets it, we'll continue on when she pulls it up, but I will start down through it.
Thank you.
In the staff review, item number one, accessory buildings shall not be erected in any shall not be required yard except the rear yard. And in answering that statement that the proposed location for this building is in the rear yard. Number two, no detached accessory building shall be located closer than 10 feet to any main building, nor shall be located closer than three feet to any side or rear lot line in the R3, 4 district and five feet to any side or rear lot line in the R1 and 2 district. According to our notes here, this is 15, excuse me, 18 feet from the rear southeast corner and 40 feet from the rear lot line. This is well within the rear yard and acceptable. Item number three, no detached building, accessory building in R1 through R4 and all the other districts are listed. I'm not going to read them all here, shall exceed one story or 14 feet in height. The height of this particular structure is 10 feet, seven inches. Number four, when accessory building is in any residential business or office district is intended for other than storage of private motor vehicles, the accessory use shall be subject to approval of zoning board repeal. Accessory building with a floor area of 100 square feet or less, not subject to the ZBA approval. That's what we're dealing with here. The applicant's requesting 180 square feet of what would cause an amic shed in the rear yard. So that's why we are addressing this as we are dealing with tonight. Number five, the accessory structure must be aesthetically compatible design and appearance and add a minimum constructive material similarity appearance and quality of the primary structure. This reaching sentence, withstanding non-commercial greenhouses as defined in section 2.68.05 are permitted in single-family residential districts. Such structure shall meet all applied restrictions, building code setbacks and lot coverage requirement for the district which they are located. And the response to that is a shed will be made of wood and vinyl siding with a company with the picture we have to show that does match the house. Item number six, no detached accessory building roof line shall exceed over the adjacent property, nor shall the drainage from any accessory building roof be drained into the adjacent property. The location of this building provides the applicant would not cause any foreseeable drain roof issue. It's far enough away from everything, so that is not a problem. And finally, the recommendation would be if the zoning board is comfortable with this site and location, we would recommend approval over 100 square feet, and we do have a motion to that. We could not receive a second on that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now that we've been through the staff review, I am happy to second the motion.
We have a motion. We have support. Any discussion on the motion? Jeremy, I assume we do a roll call vote as normal?
Yes. Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Kolesky? Are they not, they're not here?
She's here. We're voting. We're voting. Do you say yes or no?
Who did he call?
You.
You.
Okay, I can hear him. Thank you. Yes, I approve.
Sorry. Colbitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Support.
Berthold?
Support.
And Berg?
Support.
Motion passed with a unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you everybody for working through that one. Approved for your shed, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Our next item we have is a accessory building, a dimensional variance on 239 Pearl Street. Jeremy, can you give any background on this? I have a couple of questions, but maybe you can enlighten me on some things there.
Yep. So this came before the planning commission. A, I believe I put it in there. And Greg, maybe you'll remember. They came before them, I want to say a month ago, two months ago before July. And they, it's for the Grasshopper, so they're putting in an accessory building to have storage for their restaurant. However, they had applied for a 10-foot building, and when the building inspector had the plans, he showed me that it was 16-foot. And I believe Dave is here from the house fixers who could speak to that. He wanted to he had expressed to me that he wanted to do 16-feet so that way they could back a truck into it. And the 10-foot would not be high enough, so maybe he could explain that a little better than I can.
Jeremy, clarify that that's the wall height. The actual height as measured is more than that. It's the average between the peak and the eaves of the roof itself.
The peak is 24.
The request would be for more than 16 feet.
So the peak will be less than 25 foot. It works out to like 24 foot thick, just the very peak.
Okay, one of my questions, this is on the south side of Pearl Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is a lot all by, so is that the lot that was fenced in or what was fenced in with all kind of landscaped off there? Was that a couple lots that have been fenced in or?
No, that was one lot. That's the old right side building used to sit in that lot.
Okay, because I just wanted, because of the diagram, that lot appeared to be kind of long and narrow. And the one that was fenced in wasn't long and narrow.
Yeah, yeah, the one that's fenced in, I think there's two or three lots. It was at one time, and they're all combined, I think.
For what it's worth, as Jeremy pointed out, the planning commission approved this site plan at their June meeting. And so it was all set to go in terms of layout and everything like that. The only difference is the height of the building.
Why is this considered an accessory building when it's not on the property of some other building?
Good question, and it could well be.
Given the fact that there's no room to put an accessory building on the Grasshopper Restaurant Lot, that's why he bought the old right side lot across the street. Because downtown, you, there's just you know as well as I do, there's no room for businesses to have any kind of outside storage.
Mr. Chair, it seemed like the most logical way to view it. I mean, the other alternative would be to view it as a principal building on that lot, and it's not really a principal building. It's not a principal use. It's accessory to the restaurant across the street.
Okay, that was kind of my question of why it wasn't just considered a building, you know, like a primary building. Because when I think of accessory building, I think there's a primary building, and now we're adding an additional building to the same lot, but that's not the case in this situation.
No, if you were to think of it as a primary building, then the use wouldn't be allowed because warehouse isn't allowed use. Storage building isn't allowed use downtown. It has to be accessory to those restaurants.
Okay, obviously, we have some, the person here involved. Is there any other information you'd like to give us at this time?
That's you, Dave.
I didn't hear the question.
Is there any other information? Well, I'm just sharing.
Well, no, other than we just, we just kind of wanted a 16-foot for inclement weather, back semis into obviously aluminum ramps get slippery, rain, snow, that kind of thing. Running a dolly down it with food stuff on it, it, you know, somebody's leg will get hurt, so we can back that, back into the semi, into the structure. Obviously, it'll be safer for everybody involved. That's, that's why talking to the owner, we opted to go to the 16-foot if we could make that happen, just for a safety thing.
Commissioners, any questions from commissioners? Is there anyone else in here that wants to speak on this item before we go down through the various requests?
Excuse me, does anyone know how tall the building at 247 is? It's going to loom over it or the little brick thing?
Well, you know, it's a side street with
Yeah.
my industrial stuff. I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to visualize it.
Yeah.
Hey, do we, are we able to pull up the finding of fact on the camera, the written document, or I need to go read through it again?
Cindy, I made you a co-host, so you can share your screen. I'm not able to download the ZBA packet, so.
You made who a co-host?
Cindy.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at the size of that building.
Either one of you can.
I've got it. Can you? Can I share?
Yep.
You should be able to share some.
So I don't know if you still want to read it or not, Mike.
I need to read it if everybody can see it, okay?
Okay.
I'll give everybody a moment to peruse down through it, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
There is a number seven. I'll scroll down in a minute.
As you're reading through, if you have a question, just go ahead and ask. And there's the final item, number seven. Okay, based on, now everybody's had a chance to look at this, does anyone have any questions about the, what is written? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that the, considering that the findings of fact are all in the affirmative, that the request for a variance be granted.
We have a motion. We have support to accept the request. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Berthold?
Support.
Colbitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Support.
Strayer?
Yes.
Berg?
Support.
And Kolesky?
Support.
Motion passed with a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Is there any other decisions that come before the zoning board at this time from anybody or any comments from anyone?
I just wanted to say thank you.
You're most welcome, sir.
My only other comment, Mike, and it came up was it's now past history, but there was a concern, my concern of fireworks stands that did not seek approval. Can you get any information on that?
After that meeting, by that time, they had all pretty much cleared out. We do have an idea of where they are, so we're going to be vigilant on that next year and be watching for them very, very carefully.
I think the one that the, that was at the hardware store next to, after market, Glenn did get out there while it was still in the parking lot and spoke to the property owners about that one.
That was our concern, that, that site, because they never came to anybody.
Right.
Any other questions or comments for the ZBA part of this Zoom meeting?
No.
If not, the, we'll adjourn this meeting, and I assume all these other nice people and names are waiting for the planning commission meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Folks, we'll take about a two-minute break, and then Planning Commission will convene then. Folks, we'll take about a two-minute break and then planning commission will convene then. Folks, it looks like we have all the planning commissioners here. Jeremy, are you back? Not yet, apparently.
Sorry, Mike, I'm back.
Okay, very well. Folks, uh, for those of you that were there for the ZBA meeting, uh, we ask that you generally keep your microphone muted unless you need to speak. Uh, that cuts down on the, uh, background noise and possible interruptions. With that said, we'll call to order the August 4th meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. The first item on our agenda is consideration of the July 7th meeting minutes. Commissioners, I presume you've had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the July minutes? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval as written.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Is that unanimous? Okay, good, minutes are approved. First item of business on our agenda is case number 20037, uh, site plan review for 239 Pearl Street. Folks, as you may recall, we did the site plan review at our June meeting and approved it. Subsequently, the, uh, applicant revised their plans and, uh, only in terms of height of the building. And they're now proposing a, was it 16 feet?
Um, it's 24, I believe.
24, okay.
It's, it's the average between 16 and 24.
Okay, that's, that's the, exactly, okay. At the meeting that just ended, the ZBA gave their approval for a variance that would permit that height. There's actually, um, it's well within the height limit of the B3 district. But the ordinance also calls for accessory buildings not to be any taller than 14 feet. Part of me wonders if we even want to review this as a site plan because we already approved it. And if I understand Jeremy correctly, the only thing that's changed is the height of the building.
Yes.
You would just be modifying your prior approval to allow for about greater height.
Okay.
Move to approve.
And who was that?
Watson.
Watson, okay. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this matter? Jeremy, I presume we did not receive any comments by phone or in writing or?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and support for, uh, approval of the, of the revised site plan. And we would call for a roll call vote then, Jeremy.
Johnson? Support. Cotton?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Hobbits?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Watson?
Four.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, that site plan is approved.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is case 20025, uh, 307 East Beecher, a rezoning application. Uh, this was tabled at the July meeting and so, so we could just, we can begin discussion of it. I would ask for a motion to remove it from the table.
So move to table.
And is there support for that motion?
Support.
Hey, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, that's off the table. Um, you know, this is a request for a rezoning and we have two requests for, we, we have two requests for rezoning at this meeting. So give me just a minute to, uh, review for both the commissioners and the audience, our process for considering requests for rezoning. The planning commission acts on these, however, any action taken by the planning commission is in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. A rezoning requires change in the city zoning ordinance and that authority rests solely with the city commission. The criteria that we must use in making a recommendation regarding rezonings as specified by the city ordinance includes, includes specific areas for us to consider. One, what identifiable conditions related to the application have changed and would therefore justify the proposed change in zoning. Would approving the change create precedences by either approving or denying it? And what are the possible effects of those precedences? What is the impact to the ability of the city and other governmental units to provide adequate public services? Does the request to change negatively affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? What is the ability of the property in question to a reasonable economic use as it is presently zoned? And these are the criteria that we need to consider, uh, for any recommendation to be made. We'll hear first from the petitioner or their representative and ask, they give a brief overview of the request and their justification. We'll review any written or, uh, documentations received from the public or your phone calls. We'll take any public comments from people in the audience. And we will, uh, hear also from the city's planning staff. And once we've heard and considered the evidence, we may decide to render a recommendation this evening or possibly postpone action to receive further information. With that said, um, is there someone here that represents the petitioner?
I'm here, Don Lofton.
Mr. Lofton, nice to see you again.
You as well, sir.
And, uh, very briefly, give us a thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do here.
So I'm proposing that 307 East Beecher, that we rezone the north portion of our parking lot to P1, um, on B2.
And your rationale for doing so?
I'm trying to get this location for a provisioning center.
And, and the, the bottom line there is that a provisioning center cannot abut a residential property. Is that the issue?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Questions, commissioners for Mr. Lofton? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone comments on this request? That was a no, I think.
No.
Okay. Um. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the finding commission on this particular matter? Hearing none, uh, we'll close the public hearing portion of this particular case. And, uh, I'll go to staff and, uh, ask them to review their recommendations on this particular, on this particular rezoning request. Greg, you want to take that? This is, this is, the reason I ask is this is a little different than, this is the first time we've run into this. And this is the reason we tabled it at our last meeting, uh.
Well, I, actually, at the last meeting, the issue, the issue that arose was that there was a structure on this property and in the parking district, you can't have a structure. And so since the time of your last meeting, and they, and we talked at the last meeting about how a conditional rezoning would be a possibility if the applicant proffered mission that, uh, posed voluntarily, that it be conditioned upon removal of that structure. This is a canopy from the old building that was, the old building that was there extends into this area that will be parking district. Since that time, he has provided that in, that written offer. But then I know also that, uh, he applied for demolition permit to do the work to demolish it. I frankly don't know whether or not it's been demolished yet. Perhaps the applicant could tell us whether that's happened yet.
Uh, no, sir, it has not been demolished yet.
Okay, and so you would be, uh, considering tonight, the, the offer for conditional rezoning. So rezoning to be one conditioned upon removal of the canopy, uh, currently occupied the portion of the lot. So Jeremy, I think, can review that. The findings, it's his report tonight, I didn't anticipate in drafting it. But that was the, we, and we had done that last time. The obstacle that arose last time was the canopy and so that has been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Please go ahead.
So upon approval, is there a requirement for them to submit a site plan for the, for the parking lot?
Oh, the site, I would anticipate that the site plan would be for the totality of the site, both portions that still be two and the parking lot portion. Uh, and then the, the B2 use, the, the dispensary on B2 will also be a zoning exception permit application.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
But if we're splitting the lots, wouldn't they need one for both, Greg?
I think, I think it can be combined into one site plan and there's no reason to have separate site ones. But I will have to address all the property.
So the second lot too, I'd say the parking district would have to meet any requirements. That section definitely is going to be screened. I think I touched on that in the memo I sent.
Yes, you did.
Yep. I am just concerned that this could open up other, this, it's creating kind of a loophole in our ordinance that, well, if I don't like what's next to me, I can buy it and put a parking lot there. And then I meet the requirements cuz I create the buffer zone. Maybe this won't ever happen again, but it certainly sets a precedent that we can't go back on.
Ryan, that's, that's my concern too. On the other hand, we've, because when we set up, when we set up the provision, the ordinance for marijuana provisioning centers, we said we didn't want them next to residential property. And to reiterate Ryan's point, if all you need to do is split off 20 feet and call it a parking lot, uh, and have it rezoned, then it kind of defeats our intention of the ordinance. On the other hand, on the other.
But, Mike, hold on one second, but like not even, let's, let's take the, the split out of the, out of the equation. If somebody were to just buy the house next door, knock it down and request rezoning cuz I, I want more parking. That, that's where I'm worried. It's not so much the split, but it's like, okay, we can, this is a, this is an end around for things that, for anything. I mean marijuana or.
Well, let me, let me.
That kind of.
Greg?
Let me suggest a scenario that would be the wrong way to address this. And this has actually happened elsewhere. That is to split off a strip, not rezonate at all. Split off the, the strip that abuts residential and transfer that into a straw man entity or give it to the neighbor. But now you've got a strip that's still zone B2 and your parcel does not abut residential. And that strip could be one foot wide. That would be the wrong way to address it. I, I think, uh, as I said last time, this is an acceptable way to address it because they're creating a parcel that is large enough to functionally be a parking district parcel and be a parking lot. And parking districts in general, and our ordinance is the same, are set up with design requirements so that they are meant to be a transition between residential and non-residential uses. This parcel is large enough to function like that. If we're different than this, if we're, as you say, a 20-foot strip, that would be another story. But doesn't, when you evaluate a request for rezoning, you look to see whether or not it's a reasonable-sized parcel for the application of that zoning district to the parcel. And in this case, it is a large enough parcel that it makes sense.
Well, and, and to support what Greg is saying, uh, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not ashamed that we did this, but we have on a couple occasions, I think for a, a provisioning center, just in the last 12 months, said, well, gee, this corner of your property touches resident, touches residential property. You know, uh, change, change the shape of your lot by five feet and you're okay. Didn't we do that with that, uh, West Mami property? And.
The other side of the street, Tryman Lofton's property, it didn't end up getting developed, but that's exactly what happened.
But that's exactly what happened. And, and I think I, I agree with, with, uh, Mr. Elliott that this is, this is probably a preferable approach.
Greg, this is Gordon. How can this, um, parking lot be used?
As a parking lot.
So a public lot, anybody can go and park there?
No.
No.
No, it's private property still, but it can only be, the use to which it can be put is parking lot. I mean, it would be parking lot accessory. And, and these kind of districts are meant to be accessory parking for an adjoining business district. That's, that's what they're set up for.
Okay, so the space in this parking lot, is that, can that be used to account for the required parking for the provisioning center?
Good.
Okay.
Did you say it could, Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
But it doesn't seem to make sense to me because now you're having, you could have a car in the back and somebody walk out of the provisioning center with marijuana. Now they're into a parking zone.
So.
They can walk out of their house with marijuana too. State of Michigan, but.
It's like, I just want to take the, the discussion of what marijuana out of this. It's, 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 um, it's an end around that we've created. And I, I'm just concerned that we're gonna set a precedent when, if this were to pass and go to the city commission and pass there, that well, I can buy a house, knock it down and say I'm gonna put a parking lot and then I'm, then I've created my buffer that I need. I, right or wrong, I don't think it's right, but that's the way it's written and that's the way it can go.
Brian, by this, by the same token, uh, somebody could buy the house next door and ask for it to be rezoned to B2.
Well, and those questions should be, um, answered with reference to your master plan. And as we finish our new master plan and, and tighten things up, we'll be able to use it again in that way. But in this case, well, what we're really doing, and I think this is germane to this decision, is we're downzoning this land. This land's already zoned B2, not like we're taking a residential parcel and rezoning it. We're asking for it to be downzoned from a more intense use. We're asking for it to be downzoned from a more intense use to a transitional use. I think that's a difference.
Okay, Commissioners, additional discussion?
Well, Mike, my concern, Greg, is that the, the surviving piece of property, but it's B2, when we go through a site plan, it ought, it ought to stand on its own with regards to parking requirements.
I agree.
Okay.
Although, you know, we, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure that's true. If, if a person comes to us and is, again, the marijuana side, whether it's a provisioning center or not, maybe it's just a retail store. But we say, gee, you don't have, you know, your, your lot doesn't meet the parking requirements or sufficient space for the parking requirements, and the petitioner says, yeah, but I own a lot next door, and that's going to be the parking lot. What's the problem?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be appropriate for you to evaluate in the context of the zoning exception permit the proximity of the dispensary to the residential. But the way parking districts are classically used, are in scenarios where, for example, you had a, had lots fronting on a, on a major thoroughfare, and those were all zoned commercial, and over time, they've become sort of obsolete, functionally obsolete, they're not deep enough for the new sorts of commercial uses that want to occupy them, and so that, what tends to happen is that the lots behind end up getting zoned to parking district. You don't want the commercial to creep into there, but parking allows you a transitional use, and that parking not only is, but must be accessory to the adjoining commercial use.
Anybody else? Let's take a look at the findings of fact. What identifiable conditions related to the application have changed, which justify the proposed amendment? Well, the proposal is to use this as a provisioning center, which would not be permitted as the property is currently configured. Staff suggests that the P1 parking district would be the optimal choice to buffer the uses with its requirement for screening of residential properties. What are the presidences and the possible effects of such precedent, which might result from the approval or denial of this petition? This is, this is kind of the sticking point here, and the one that, that we need to deal with, but if we are to approve this or recommend approval to the city commission, it just does, does set the precedent that this is how we would deal with similar situations in the future. I don't think, I don't believe there's any impact on the city's ability to provide services to this property as, if it was zoned P1. And I don't anticipate any adverse environmental conditions or effects on the surrounding property values. And of course, the property could be put to use as it's marketable as it currently sits as, as any number of B2 uses. With that said, do we have a motion for action on this item?
I move to approve the resolution. Support.
We have a motion in support. And the motion would be to recommend to the city commission the change in zoning of this property from B2 to P1. Commissioners, additional discussion? Anyone? Okay. We have a motion and support for it. I would suggest that if we, if we so chose to approve this as a recommendation to the city commission, that we've done the findings of fact, and that it would be within our authority to do so. That being said, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Otten?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Watson?
So.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Or.
Motion passed seven to one.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 1105 East Beecher, a zoning exception application and site plan review for a marijuana-growing facility. Is there someone here to speak to that particular project?
I think we have 307 East Beecher next to us.
I'm sorry, excuse me. No, that's what we just did, 307 is what we just did.
I'm sorry.
This is case 20032, 1105 East Beecher. Zoning exception application and site plan review. Am I correct?
Yes.
You are correct.
Okay, is there someone in the audience that represents the petitioner here?
There is, you have John McQuich here.
John, if you could very briefly tell us what it is you're proposing to do, give us a thumbnail sketch.
This is a renovation of a small existing facility, approximately 1,100 square foot. It's going to be a small Class A grow for grow rooms in it.
It's none of my business, but is that big enough to make it pay?
For this location, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Do you have plans in the future of this being a dispensary or a retail establishment?
Not at the current moment. There is future plans to build out the rest of the footprint of that location, but right now it's all going to be a cultivation facility.
Okay. Questions for the applicant commissioners? When we consider a zoning exception permit, we need to consider whether the proposal meets the specific requirements for that use. And we need to consider whether granting this application would have any negative environmental impacts. We need to decide whether this use is compatible with the surrounding properties, and is it consistent with the city's future land use plan? This property is in the east side marijuana district. Staff has reviewed it and has found in the affirmative for all of the criteria relative to a zoning exception permit. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular matter? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone calls relative to this proposal?
No, we did not. I would like to address the planning commission when I have, when you have a second.
Oh, please go ahead.
Um, so, I think if you look at the packet, I kind of said, it's my assumption that they will eventually put a dispensary there, and I would like to reiterate to the applicant that if that is the case, this special use is not for a dispensary, so you will have to reapply again. And that will bring your site plan forward, so if that's the case, I would implore you to say that that is what is going to happen there. But other than that, I think the site plan and the site is fine. The site's in pretty good shape, other than it could use a little bit of seal coating. I discussed with their architect, added some more landscaping to beautify the spot. They meet our clear vision on the corner, and I would like to see a photometric from them to review. Because there is residential next to it that wasn't supplied. I'd like to also see some fencing details to be sure that it's adequately fenced to screen them as well.
Okay, tell you what, let's, let's deal first with these zoning exception permit, and we'll get to the site plan in just a second then. Commissioners, any discussion relative to the zoning exception? If there are none, we would entertain a motion for action on this particular application.
Motion to approve.
To support?
The board.
That was from Krista Cotton and Bob Love. Again, this is relative to approval of the zoning exception permit. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Support.
Weatherby?
Support.
Otten?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, then taking a look at the site plan. I think Jeremy actually already addressed the, the concerns relative to, we need to have the final site plan show locations and enclosure for the dumpster. Need to have the parking lot improved in terms of resealing. And we need to have a photometric plan showing where the lighting and how it's going to impact, potentially impact on the neighboring properties. Sir, we're good with that? John? You still there?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that's fine on our end, we'll get that to you shortly.
Okay. Commissioners, any discussion relative to the site plan? If there's no additional discussion, we would entertain a motion for conditional approval of the site plan with the stipulations being that the parking lot would be resealed, that the site plan and the site itself will show the dumpster and enclosure, and, and it will staff or review a photometric plan.
We, we would like to see an odor control plan, and maybe Greg can jump in on that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to mention that as well, too. We need to know-
It's one of the ones that the city's still trying to work that out. I, I don't know if Greg, if you want to jump in on that, but odor control plan is something we've been trying to add into these, fire flow testing, it should just be standard, they should be submitting that to Eric. My, I believe that's something he wanted.
Well, in the- What we've been doing with the odor control plan is having them represent to us what their plan is, and applicant should describe what their process is right now, if they haven't submitted that in writing, and, and then they can follow up and provide a writing that is consistent with their description of the odor control protocols that they're going to give you tonight, and then they're on record, that's sort of the minimum. We may come up with standards later that will be strict on that, but at least we know they've thought about it, they've planned to address it. I would point out also on the other point that they cannot, they will not be able to have a provisioning center on this site because it abuts, I believe it abuts residential, if it abuts residential.
According to the review, it does.
They won't be able to provision a center on the site, you know, and so we know that it's only going to be a grow, grow-in process, indoor process.
And just to add to that, the ordinance does specify that any grow facility will not, that both noise and the odor will not be detectable at adjacent properties, and I think what Mr. Elliott is saying is we need to know, we need to know how you're going to accomplish that, so. Again, we have a motion, did we have a motion?
No.
Okay, we need a motion for approval of the site plan, a conditional approval of the site plan with the stipulations that we just outlined.
Move to approve a stipulation.
Mr. Watson and Mr. Taylor, thank you. Any additional discussion? Jeremy, a roll call vote, if you don't mind.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Watson?
Or.
Otten?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Hey, thank you, sir. Best of luck with that. Folks, our next case, case 20033 for 115 East Santa Heights Drive, is also a rezoning application from R4 to B2. I've already reviewed our criteria in our process for considering rezonings. Is there someone in the audience to address the planning commission on this particular proposal? Hello? Anybody?
Mike Nicollet should be here.
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, Mike, is that you?
You hear me?
We can hear you, we can't see, that's okay.
Oh. Yeah, I helped the owner of the restaurant put together a site plan. The concept was that he wanted to acquire the, or he did acquire the property next door to him, to the east, and he needed additional parking for his restaurant, and so I put together the drawing package that shows what he could potentially do with the parking. I know his long-term intent is to remove that home that's on the site and take over the whole lot. He did mention to me that he wanted to phase, the drawings we put together as though we were phasing the parking lot. Initially, he would leave the house up and get, I, I don't have the drawings in front of me, but get about 15 or 16 parking spaces in there, and then complete the lot when he removes the house so that he can have through traffic from Santa Heights to the adjacent street.
You know, I, I have to say, I don't have any real problem with a request for rezoning. We've never seen a site plan for this particular project. And that's, that's kind of water under the bridge at this point, but we're getting ahead of ourselves. I'm getting ahead of ourselves here a little bit, but you know, when you're talking about the number of parking spaces, well, gee, we, we don't know that this lot will hold sufficient parking as required for a restaurant like this. But I guess that's neither here nor there, that this should have been done in a site plan for the whole property from the, you know, before construction was even started.
My question, Mike, is why are we, I mean, this is a parking lot, this is what that ordinance, the previous one we discussed, is intended for. Why are we going to B2 and not just doing a parking lot?
Well, because if the, if he wants to keep the house on it and maybe rent it out, that wouldn't be permitted in a parking district. Is one reason.
Yeah, that's, that's right, Mr. Chairman. Our discussions with him initially were to recommend parking district back here, but as you point out, he did that, the same issue that arose with Mr. Lofton's proposal would have arisen here because he doesn't feel like he can financially handle demolishing the house right now, and so the way for him to attempt to move forward and be able to have some parking on that parcel in the interim until he's able to take the house down is to go with B2. B2 is, if you look up and down the street in other blocks, B2 does extend this far into blocks to the south of here, so it's not like the, it's not unprecedented in terms of the extent of the zoning district along the stretch of Maine, but you know, would, would parking district be better? Yes, it would be better, but it would require him to commit to demolishing the house. She wasn't, didn't feel like he was able to commit. And as the chair points out, you know, there is an issue here with no parking. It's the case that prior zoning administrator allowed this to proceed, whereas it probably should have gone through site plan review. And two city administrators prior gave him a letter indicating that he could use the parking in the public park across the street for his business purposes. You know, neither of those things were very good ideas, but now we're left with a situation where we have a substantially completed, very nicely remodeled structure that is almost ready to open, but doesn't really have any functional parking available.
Commissioners, discussion? Questions for the applicant? Jeremy, did we receive any written or phone call, written comments or phone calls on this proposal?
No, Mr. Chair, we did not.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposed change in zoning? Hearing none will close the public hearing, hearing portion of this particular issue and go to commissioner discussion. To kind of back up what Mr. Elliott already said, and that's that, gee, this is, this is a beautiful looking project and we've, on a number of counts, the ball has been dropped in terms of how this should have been handled. But that's, this is where we are now. And I would, I would personally hate to see it not be able to go forward because of a lack of parking. And I think that the proposal to be to changing that property to B2 doesn't change the character of the neighborhood significantly. Has little environmental impact, not, no environmental impact. In fact, you know, we're just, we're making this B2 property that faces on Main Street a little bigger and with a dog leg.
Are they combining the two lots?
Not necessarily, no. But in terms of functionally, that's what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, they do refer to that. Staff refers to that by saying economically speaking, the combining of the parcels would be more beneficial. So there's no reason why they couldn't do that, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
I was, I was under the impression from the applicant that they were, when I spoke to him on the phone most recently, that he was wanting to tear the house down and combine those lots.
I just read somewhere too, where it said it'd be more tax beneficial to the city to have it as one lot.
Well, no, I think what it says is be more beneficial if it was zoned for business, but oh, no, you're right, Brian, excuse me.
I'd like that in the notes that he said I was right.
Highlighted, underlined, bolded?
In red.
Any other discussion, commissioners?
Really, you couldn't put a business on this lot because it's too small.
Right.
Right, Greg?
Well, the house exists. So if he, you know, one implication of this is if he wanted to have a business in that lot, in that house, that would be allowable. But again, only if he could require provide the required off-street parking. He isn't going to be able to.
Well, what I'm asking is he couldn't knock it down. It's too small to put a new building on and meet all the requirements of setbacks and parking.
I would think that would be true.
Could be one of those drive-through film processing places.
Don't suggest drive-through.
What are you, what are you talking about?
Never mind, never mind. Okay. Terms of findings of fact, like I, we've kind of reviewed these already. What changed, what, what circumstances have changed? The property at 1018 North Main Street is in need of parking. And this rezoning would allow the combination of lots for parking needs. Does this create any precedences or possible effects of precedences? I don't see any. These are already adjacent to B2. It's not spot zoning. They will need to, I presume that we will do a site plan for this parking lot at some point. At which time we could address any storm store or screening issues between this and the adjacent residential property. But I don't see any adverse environmental effects by changing this to B2. The property could be put to good use as a residential property, but probably is a higher and best use as is being proposed. If we so chose, I would say that we could recommend to the city commission the change in this zoning from R4 to B2. And would entertain a motion to that effect. Anybody?
So.
Mr. Taylor, thank you. And support was from Mr. Johnson, I believe. Commissioners, any additional discussion? If there is none, a roll call vote, please.
Watson?
Support.
Johnson?
Support.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
And Weatherby?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very well. Thank you for joining us, Mike. Um. Accessory buildings is the next item on our agenda. Jeremy has provided a draft, not a draft per se, in fact, it's on the screen, I see, of I was, I find this a little frustrating when it's shared. I'm trying to scroll the share and that doesn't work, you know? Jeremy, you want to walk us through what we're looking at here?
Just tell me where you need me to go, guys.
You're, you're fine where you're at. Over the past couple ZBA meetings we've had, and this was in the last one, too, we've had multiple sheds come before us that are over 100 square feet. It seems as though they were never being brought to the ZBA. I don't know if that's the case or not. I'm not going to apply that. But we are starting to see them. And if you drive down past Myers and Lowe's and all those, you're going to see these sheds sitting out. And I think that's where a lot of these are coming from and why they're, the sizes of there. So I tried to do a little bit of research. The ZBA requested that we look at this. One that I, you know, so I provided you with a memo, kind of explaining why we, why I looked at Fairfax and why I think that I like their setup. In Fairfax, Virginia, they kind of classify it two different ways. They classify it as a shed and as a storage building. We currently only use sheds. On a property, you can have an attached garage, a detached garage, and another shed, which is a little ridiculous. So the guy in the ZBA meeting that did not like that shed, and he called it a garage, which rightfully so, it could be. But we don't classify it that way. In Virginia, the way that they did it is they classified it as a storage shed, which they do as 250 square feet, which I find possibly a bit big. They also do have, if you look at, Michelle, if you'll go down a little bit. The, keep, keep going to the next one. A little bit more, right there. So they, oh, go back. So they kind of, while she's going back to that section, they kind of show up a little bit, Michelle. The spot right above 46, that's like, right there.
There we go.
So they kind of show a little bit of a calculation. And what I want to do is a calculation. So we have our R1 through R4 lots. R1 lots are bigger, R4 lots are smaller. So allowing a 250 square foot structure on an R4 lot is ridic. Allowing a second garage in that is even more ridiculous. In this, they kind of, this is their handout. This isn't their ordinance by any means, but we can kind of look at the R1, which is a larger lot, as the guy in the ZBA did it. I don't know how many of you were there. But as that is, he could have a larger shed and it not affect his total area for the 30% that he can have. If it's an R4, it's a different story. Whether we want to keep bringing these to the ZBA is up to you. I'm more than willing to write something for you to consider that we can use a percentage for different lots to try to mitigate this from having to be $150 fee to residents to get a shed put on their property. And really, this is up for discussion. It's up for you to look at your thoughts. And I can get you something next meeting if you'd want.
Jeremy, I like the concept that, that this order, this handout shows. I also liked the fact that they addressed Quonset Huts and hoop houses and temporary garages and things like that, too, because that's the
You love the Quonset hut.
Well, it's a, it's not just that. It's also, we've, we've got, we've got dozens and dozens of tent garages in town, which A, don't look good, and B, I think there was a health and safety hazard if there's a big wind. That thing is going to blow away. And there goes the dog. Excuse me, continue the discussion. I'll be right back.
Take, take over, Commissioner Watson.
Wow, that's a lot of responsibility. Um, I do like this 30% thing, but I do feel like we need them to come to the city so the building inspector or somebody can go out and say, yes, it can be placed here. That's kind of my concern, you know, it needs to be, you know, setbacks are different in all areas. Everybody thinks they can, and the people out there will be like, oh, yeah, sure, we can do that. No problem. We'll pop it right there. Yeah, you don't know where your property line is. Next thing you know, you got it sitting halfway on your neighbor's yard and then they get pissed. That we need some mechanism for this to be monitored because it is getting out of control, isn't it? But it's just, it's become the hot thing.
Yeah.
Um, we do require a zoning compliance review for any shed of whatever size and then building code. I want to say it's 120 square feet. If a structure is larger than that, it requires a build-up permit as well.
No matter how often, no matter if it's pre-built or not, it requires a building permit, correct?
If it's above that size.
And our building official does like to make sure things are adequately secured to the ground, too. So it wouldn't be unreasonable for him to go check on these as well. We'd prefer that. Honestly, I think he would, too.
Yeah, I for one think we need to tighten this up as well. I have a neighbor who I don't know whether he went through the process or not, but put a, certainly a large storage shed on his property. It's attractive. But I'm not sure that he followed the regulations and I'm not sure that he took out a permit and had it inspected. But in any, in any event, I think we definitely need to have some better guidelines. And I'm in support of all this that you're opposing, Jeremy.
Okay. I would be happy to bring something to you guys to consider next, next month. If, if the Virginia one looks good, I actually really like how they have their calculations. So I would try to piggyback off that and bring you something that we can hopefully pass it. If not, modify it and get it pushed through.
One other, one other thing I think we need to address too and think about is, you know, people put a pool in, they want to put a cabana, you know, that though it doesn't have four walls and a door, it's still a structure on your property. So do you get you know, a 10 by 10 is free and then you can put up another structure or what would the process be there?
Would, because that would be such a rare occasion, do we want to keep that as a ZBA requirement?
I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. That's just, you know, that
Think about?
Yeah. I mean, my friend just put a pool in out in the township and the next thing you know, it's like, oh, yeah, it's a little far from the house. We need somewhere to sit under. You've got to put up a, you know, four posts and a roof on it. It looks nice. It's you know, built soundly, but you know, like you said, people throw up those blue tarp sheds you can buy at Walmart to cover up their old car that's got six years of trash in it. I mean, we want something with teeth that, you know, we're taking the view that we need to clean stuff up around the city. We need something with teeth.
Understood.
Jeremy, does that give you enough direction to?
Yeah, I think I can have something for you next month that you'll be happy with.
Okay, very good. Well, we appreciate it. Thank you. Folks, the next item on our agenda, I'm not familiar with this, but we have supposedly a presentation by the crime prevention. Crime prevention through environmental design, is that correct? And do we have someone from that organization here? Identify yourself if you would.
That's me. I'm Harmony Gamazal, educator with MSU Extension.
Oh, hey, Harmony, welcome.
Harmony.
Yeah, thanks. Good to be here. And I do have some slides to show you. So you may or may not know that the crime prevention through environmental design project has been happening since December. We kicked it off with a public workshop and I'm just here to give you an update tonight. And also an invitation to a special event happening later on this month. So if you have about five to eight minutes of time, I certainly appreciate you putting me on the agenda tonight. And I will start. So Adrian Safe Neighborhoods is the name of the project and it is a partnership with MSU School of Planning, Design and Construction. Also MSU Extension, the Shoret Institute at MSU and the City of Adrian. And it started with the DDA. I want to thank the steering committee that's been helping this, this project for the last few months since the winter, Dusty Steele from the DDA, from the police department and Greg Elliott, of course, from City Hall. We have started to write, I should say, we're implementing the DDA's new strategic plan that came out of a 2019 process. Looking at crime prevention through environmental design was a goal in that strategic plan. And so that is where this effort began. And it naturally became a partnership with the police department and City Hall. The purpose is of doing SEPTED, we call it C-P-T-E-D, crime prevention through environmental design, is just to affect really change in the city for public health, safety and welfare. And that's through improved environmental design, reasonable levels of policing and increased community engagement. And this project does help with all of that. So what we let SEPTED, we've added placemaking to that. So we like to identify and preserve great places in the city already, create them if they need to be created, and then address crime through changes to our streetscapes, yards, sidewalks and alleyways, roadways, lighting, landscaping, access around town, et cetera. So there's lots of ways to reduce crime through changes to the environment and also to preserve great places. So I'll give you a really quick summary of what that is. It involves four elements. That is surveillance, accessibility, territoriality and quality environments. These are all things that SEPTED strives for. Increased surveillance on the street, eyes on the street. Are people actually there at all hours of the day and evening to detect suspicious activities? Are there good lines of sight down each roadway and across houses and yards and things like that between businesses? That means a lot. Then accessibility, how do we attract people and vehicles to where we would like them to be, to where they want to go versus restricting accessibility to Versus restricting accessibility to potential criminal offenders. Uh, and then the territoriality is very important because a sense of ownership on our properties throughout the city is critical. Uh, in reducing crime. If, if a potential offender, uh, looks at a property that has some sense of ownership to it, like it's being cared. For and well-maintained, quality environments, they are more likely to move on. Uh, and not bother with that property. So these are four elements of SEPTED. Some examples here of surveillance ideas. In the upper left, same parking lot, but it's before and after, uh, improved lighting. And so you see in the after shot, no shadows, uh, much more of a SEPTED, uh, type design. Cameras, of course, are a big element of, of SEPTED for surveillance as well. And then storefronts, um, at the very bottom, you see examples of. Windows and doors on a storefront that are blocked by signs. And this is really not SEPTED. What we like to see is what's on the right, which are the, the windows and the eyes on the street. And the eyes, uh, looking in from the street are very much more clear and allows for, um, the surveillance to occur better. Some examples of just lighting, clearing out shrubbery, night lighting, um. Cameras you see at the doorbell, just all these little very affordable things to do for surveillance that really help with SEPTED. And these can be on public property and private property. I do see that I'm getting an unstable internet connection. If I do drop off, I will be back on. Just give me a moment. I apologize. Um, again, more about surveillance. We just want to increase ads of better observation. This is the same car in three different pictures under different lighting and you can see how we would be very difficult to tell what the real color was of the car. At night, just based on the lighting around it, but the one in the middle, that type of lighting is what we prefer for SEPTED because you can actually see. At true colors and there's less shadow, much more safe. Uh, little looking inside of a store for surveillance changes. This is quite interesting because you see in the upper left, a store with the. You see those gray shaded boxes are actually tall shelving units that block sightlines. Even across the front window there, you can see that between the cold store and door A. Uh, they've blocked the window and then the cash register is up in the upper left corner and those sightlines are blocked and they can't see what's happening in other areas. Now, if you just institute some very cheap, easy SEPTED elements, you move that shelving around, you move the register. And you, and, and put some mirrors in and maybe a camera, you have much more, uh, increased. Surveillance and a much safer environment for the workers and visitors. Sightlines, again, a little bit more on that, clearing out landscaping and shrubbery, clear sightlines. You can see that photo, that, that drawing in the middle. Where the bicyclist and the person on the porch can easily see out the road and through the yard. Because landscaping is trimmed in such a way to allow those sightlines and then they have some lighting. And then look at the different types of fencing in the lower left pictures, same person walking their dog along. Uh, can or cannot see a person entering or exiting a window illicitly. So depending on the types of fencing that you see in the city, uh, it can actually be more safe and reduce crime if you can see better. Now accessibility, we wanna make offenders, criminal offenders feel like it is way too risky for them to commit a crime here. Anywhere in the city, so we wanna limit their free access to properties, to neighborhoods and to our downtowns. We do that through. Various designs in signage, landscaping, locks, of course, are very easy. Fencing, you can see a picture here of just minimal speed bumps, um, you can do. There's such a wide range of accessibility design changes you can make in the city. Uh, and on private property to help minimize, um, criminals' accessibility to your property. Even the way you see in this middle picture of someone able to climb up on a fence over a roof and get into a TV and, and, and burglarize. So little things like that and so we're looking at a lot of that and then just the way places are landscaped. This picture in the lower left has a great sightline, feel very safe there. The lighting is probably very good at night. Uh, and so this is a much more SEPTED designed. Place. And then signage, always where are you, what's coming up, what's around you? This is always great. And it's for territoriality to, uh, to show that, um, people do live here and care about the place. And you can do that in all sorts of ways, through art, decoration, landscaping, planting, signage. Uh, from very, uh, zero cost type ways to do this to more expensive ways, but again. Building that sense of community and territoriality, that sense of ownership and someone is caring about the place can really do a lot to reduce crime. Even the smallest holiday displays in a yard can deter crime. Uh, burglaries and larcenies because they're more likely to move on to a property that doesn't have this much, uh, care taken. And it does make a difference. Quality environments, again, just maintaining streets, sidewalks, alleyways, trails and facades. Can do a lot to reduce crime and that can be from very cheap changes. To, to our properties, to more expensive planned out changes. So. We add placemaking to this SEPTED theory and planning, uh, because placemaking itself is transformational. It is also having to do with changes to our built environment, just like SEPTED and creating community and so. Uh, placemaking is generally making changes to an environment or bringing new activities, uh, to it, like here's a. A community painting project, uh, arts and murals, places to interact. This is pre-COVID. So we have to rethink what placemaking will look like in twenty and twenty twenty-one. But again, placemaking, there's three different types, really. There's tactical, which is very low cost, low effort, lots of fun, like. Board games on the sidewalk you see here, very easy, but again attracts people. And that in, in and of itself is SEPTED, right? You're reducing crime, you're putting more surveillance on the street and you're creating a great place. There's creative placemaking, just where you always incorporate arts, theater and music into a place. And then strategic, which is larger budget, like you see the housing infill here on the right. Uh, requires more longer term funding and planning. Of course, you can combine all three of these, um, you can also do them singularly. And again, these placemaking efforts, no matter what level you do them at, also reduce crime. While creating great places. So what do we hope to accomplish and what are we accomplishing with the Safe Neighborhoods Project? Well, we're looking at this summer unveiling policies, policy recommendations that do reduce crime and increase that sense of place. Promote circulation for vehicles and pedestrians in a way that inhibits crime, uh, uh, during all hours. Uh, throughout the city and in our neighborhoods, just promoting public safety through quality environmental design. Looking at existing planning efforts, leveraging those resources into future SEPTED activities. Uh, I have met with, uh, Joe and Cherie from Giffords Webster who are working on your master plan update. And I'm sharing data with them and updates and they hope to incorporate all this engagement and policy recommendations into the. Uh, new plan update as well. So we're great to have that synergy and build, um, that synergy. Uh, also looking at the cultural assets you have in Adrian and trying to create those, uh, preserve authentic neighborhood features. Uh, in a way, and also the DDA is involved, we cannot forget, and their whole goal is to support existing businesses. And create opportunities for new ones and that involves doing every little bit we can to, um, create the. Public feeling that it is safe to come downtown, uh, and do business and for leisure. Uh, and to live there. And so this is why it's so important to, the DDA is a, is a, is a. That's a big partner for this SEPTED project. Um, the policies, uh, that are going to come out of the work and I'll get into what that means in a little bit. We wanna make sure that they are achievable. So we're going to identify ways and when I say we, it's, um, uh, two folks, faculty members at MSU and myself. Just to recommend SEPTED techniques to the city at the end of this month, uh, in ways that can reduce crime that are low cost and high impact. And then identify resources that residents, renters, landowners. In the city can access to make changes and move forward and identify some placemaking opportunities. How are we doing that? How are we gonna come up with those recommendations? Well, we have with the help of Vince at the Police Department and his staff, we have, uh, mapped out the crime data for the city between the years of. Twenty-eight, uh, twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. So we can see crime trends for both violent crime and property crime. Overlay that crime map, uh, those crime mapping trends with a geographic analysis of the city and its neighborhoods. And then you can start to see where there are hotspots of crime. And then what are the changes to the environment that could be made? Uh, to reduce that crime eventually. So that's the crime data, the data piece of it. The public engagement piece that has been going on, and if you've been involved with us on Facebook, you've been asked many times to complete our survey and take part in the photo voice. Um, project. Um, but we are doing pretty well in collecting survey information from residents about. Their sense of personal safety in the city, uh, policing, neighborliness, placemaking. And they can actually identify geographically a place in the city where they don't feel safe and a place where they do feel safe and explain why. So these surveys have been very important. Um, I was just given the news today that we are extending the deadline for the surveys from July thirty first. When it ended, to all the way to August twenty-second, which is super. I learned that the MSU team can take survey results. All the way up to right before our online showcase that I'll get to in a minute. So we're excited to keep collecting people's opinions about this topic. Online, uh, and then photo voice, which is, uh, submit two photos online. And we have a quick link for that. Submit a photo of something you're grateful for in your neighborhood with the built environment, something you're not grateful for and explain why. Right, create a photo essay and from that we are creating an online photo voice gallery. Uh, to tell the stories across our neighborhoods, uh, about, about this issue. And then finally, MSU team is developing policy recommendations based on this data, based on the engagement. This is the timeline, just briefly, I'm not gonna go all the way through this, uh, in the past. Um, but I'll point out that second from the bottom, August twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth is a week long virtual showcase at our website. And then we will be posting videos and things like that of all of the findings and interesting things we've come across along the way. And then we're hosting a leadership roundtable Thursday, August twenty-seventh from four to six thirty. This is online, hosted by MSU and myself. And we hope to have many of you, uh, there at this roundtable. If you could please save the date, we will be, um. Presenting the findings and recommendations of all of this work, uh, in a live presentation. And then we will do breakouts with all of the leadership from around the city, uh, to get feedback and some ideas for next steps. Uh, and so the project does end in September, but Adrian is part of a, what we call a cohort. With the cities of Albion and Howell, who are also going through the same Safe Neighborhoods process. And really helping, uh, with this cohort, uh, to provide feedback on a statewide guidebook. On planning for SEPTED and that would be something in twenty twenty-one, which is really exciting. And so. Again, save August twenty-second, I'm sorry, August twenty-seventh from four to six thirty for a Zoom leader roundtable. Please visit our website, um. The address is at the bottom and I will put it in the chat before I leave tonight. Uh, but it does have everything you need. It'll have all the updates, all the videos as we get into August. You can take the survey here and submit your photos. I do have to get that July thirty-first deadline off of there because it's now August twenty-second. Um, but, um, please, please visit the website. You can learn about SEPTED, learn about photo voice. And there's a little bit about the showcase on there, but we're still populating this website and it's been, it's been really helpful. Feel share it. We are on Facebook and thanks to Michelle for always sharing and forwarding our posts, um, through the city Facebook pages. Um, but we are just at Adrian Safe Neighborhoods. And pretty much we use this as a place to push the survey, push photo voice and we will be definitely posting videos and links. During that online showcase week, starting the twenty-fourth, so please. Find us. The photo voice gallery, a, a gallery looks like in person, people actually. Talking about the photos that they took of their neighborhood and why it's important to them with, with leadership visiting. Every photographer and hearing the stories firsthand. I'm sorry, we can't do that, uh, this summer, uh, but we will be replicating this. Online with PowerPoints and essays and photos. So you'll see that at our website as well. And again, we're still collecting photos. Uh, and essays, uh, so please, everyone on this call and beyond are, are invited. Did, uh, to submit photos. So four things I leave you with, I'm done now, uh, but take the survey, please. Get two photos with a story at the photo voice link. Save the week of August twenty-fourth to watch those presentations at our website. And then, and to visit the photo gallery and then please save August twenty-seventh, four to six thirty PM for that leadership roundtable. Uh, to, um, to wrap up this project and start the conversations about what's next. Everything you need, again, is at that Google website we've created for this project. Again, I'll put it in the chat. The public is invited to the leadership roundtable. Uh, public will, um. Be able to view the live presentation, hear everything that we're presenting and then go off into their, into. A separate breakout room while different leadership, uh, folks go into their separate breakout rooms to discuss what they've heard and what next steps they would like to take. And then everybody comes back together at the end, uh, to hear what one another has said in the room. So that's kind of what that round table is going to look like. Um, and then please, I leave you with each one, ask one, please ask a fellow leader to, uh, attend this with you, uh, at least one person, right? And, uh, we definitely want to spread the word about this roundtable and, uh. And I've asked, I have asked Joe and Cherie from Giffords Webster to be, uh, there at the roundtable. Hopefully they can attend and, uh. And, and that'll help them incorporate this into your master plan update. So I believe that's all I. Have and I just wanna thank you again for your time so that you have had a busy. Uh, busy agenda, so I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm get that website link into the chat. So I can take questions, but thanks again.
Michelle, thank you. I mean Harmony, excuse me, Harmony, thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions for her? Okay, well, thank you so much for sharing that. Folks. Jeremy, are we set for the thirteenth for, uh, meeting with our comprehensive plan consultants?
So we wanted to, to check with you all. There, there were some. Folks who could make the twenty-seventh and not the thirteenth and some folks that could make the thirteenth and not the twenty-seventh. So, uh, we hope to decide on one date or the other tonight. Hopefully Gifford still has the thirteenth open. Uh, seems to, his schedule fills up pretty fast, but those are the dates that they gave us this. Last week when we talked to them as being available.
Okay, I, I can. Only speak for myself and possibly Commissioner Weatherby, I, we, we will be in the, uh, Kiwanau. On the twenty-seventh. With. Almost guaranteed no cell reception and certainly no internet, so.
I can confirm that. I was just there this week. The phones do not work. It's amazing.
Are, uh, are we all? Uh, interested in confirming the thirteenth then if, if they're still available for that date?
Please.
Yeah, either date works for me, so I don't.
Either works for me.
Yeah, I just. I just won't be here the thirteenth.
Who, who was that? Bob, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not planning to be here on the thirteenth either.
Okay.
But if I have a radical change in plans, I could make it happen on the thirteenth, but I'd rather not.
Okay. Um, it will be a virtual meeting?
Yes.
And we will record it? Okay. Um.
What, what time? Do we know yet?
Uh, well, I think that's open to discussion. Uh, if we wanna try to move it up, um, we did. You know, I, I think the assumption was that it would be an evening meeting, but. Uh, we could try to move it up and so I don't think you were interested in.
I've got, I've got a conflict. I've got another board meeting at five o'clock that same day that I will make sure I'm done with by seven, so.
That would make sense, I think.
Alright, we'll try to do the thirteenth at seven.
Okay.
We'll let you know this week.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Michelle Dewey, thank you for hosting. Mayor Heath, thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry. I thought you'd have an open to the public period.
That's what I just said. Is there any other business?
I'm sorry, I want to introduce myself. I'm Angie Werner and involved with the old Garfield property on Cross Street. An article was put out in the paper, which kind of made me. Get ahead of myself because I really didn't want to come until I knew we were going to have the property. I just wanted to come and say hello and maybe get an idea for how you feel about. The use we would want to do for the property because it would require a zoning change. Right now, we operate MH pump on Winter Street that's owned light industrial. I don't take up too much of your time. I know it's late, but. And so that would be kind of what I'm looking to do there. We would just be doing the same business there that we do on Winter Street. And keeping the Winter Street location. It's a wholesale supply house. We don't have a lot of traffic. The Garfield property with traffic that comes in off Main Street or Winter Street would make it so hardly anyone would be using the cross street traffic. We're in a residential area now, the same area. So. That was.
Ms. Fur, is the is the Garfield property adjacent in a budding your current property?
Um.
Do they connect?
No. I mean, if the railroad track wasn't there, they would connect in the northwest corner. But the railroad track runs between them.
Mr. Chair, both the railroad track and the the path of the new. Trail extension both separate, bisect the property.
Okay.
One side from the other.
I, you know, on on one hand, we're glad to see that property developed. But for one, I really can't give any kind of opinion until I would see, you know, some kind of development plan or something like that. Not I'm not in a position to say, oh, yes, please rush ahead with that, or that's a great idea. I would need to have a lot more information.
Yeah, speaking from myself, you know, you say you're currently on an industrial piece. You know, once we change that to whatever you need it to be, it's like that forever. Even if you go away. So, you know, we need a plan that says this is what we're going to do, but. There's there's lots of ifs involved in this.
And you probably already know this, you need to be working with Jeremy Clement or Mr. Elliott at City Hall. And. To get something on our agenda that way.
Right. Jeremy and I have spoke a little bit and he suggested I come here as a. Way to just introduce. Unfortunately, the article put it out there without. Me having done any planning and I did not talk to them or want anything printed at the time, but obviously they're doing their job.
Well, and I that doesn't, I don't think that influences us one way or the other. I wouldn't be too concerned with that. But I just, we're glad to hear from you. I'm glad to know there's interest in the property. Like I said, I until we would have more more specifics, can't really offer an opinion though.
I didn't I didn't think that we should offer an opinion. I wanted her to kind of. The paper kind of put it in a weird way where it seemed as though it was already gone through. And just to be sure, you know, how the feeling is, I want to see. How how we feel about it. And, you know, I kind of explained to her that there there's been opposition to the senior housing we've had, to the. Workforce housing we've had, and I don't know how warehousing would feel in that location. But, you know, I can't stop a petitioner from coming through. So I wanted her to at least, you know, give us a bit of information and. If she still feels she wants to, this could potentially come in front of you. So I thought.
All right, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I just thought it would be good for her to, you know, public comment, just say her piece and then we can go from there.
And we appreciate that. It's good to hear.
This again would be a situation where we would want to seek guidance from our master plan where rezoning is requested. Unfortunately, our old plan. As this was a school site, just assumed it would be a school site forever and designated to this public quasi-public and. We only have guidance as to what surrounds it, but what surrounds it is all single family residential.
Yep.
You know, I if she's seeking guidance, I would suggest that it's. Problematic to consider rezoning it to a those.
Yeah, I'm a comment.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gordon.
Comment that to piggy off, piggyback off of Jeremy is from prior experience, we know that. Residents on Cross Street tend to be very vocal about changes in the neighborhoods. That's something just to keep aware of.
I understand that and I will definitely keep that in mind. I also want to point out, please come by MH pump on Winter Street. We are in the same neighborhood. We've lived and grown up in the neighborhood. My parents still live across from MH pump on Winter Street. We've had that building for 24 years. It is in a residential area. Much the same as it would be on Cross Street. And to the best of my knowledge, in the time we've been there, there's not been any complaints or problems. With us and any of the neighbors. We contribute to the area. In trying to make sure we keep ours clean and help out where we can with all the neighbors and. To some extent, there might be something good in having that property developed by someone who has a vested interest locally to that area.
Yep. The difficulty we have, as Mr. Watson pointed out, is once we rezone it, the rezoning goes with the property, not with the owner. And two years later, you folks, you know, could decide to sell it and the next person would not be as responsible an owner as you are. And it's still in the middle of this residential neighborhood. So something to keep.
I guess we still have that problem with MH pump on Winter Street too. The same thing could happen there.
Yep. But thank you. We appreciate the information.
Thank you for your time.
Any other business to come before us this evening? Folks, our next meeting is Tuesday, September 1st. I mentioned that only because many and many years that ends up being the Tuesday following Labor Day. And the city commission has bumped our meeting for theirs, but that's not the case this year. The first is a Tuesday, so that will be our meeting. If there's no other business for us this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all.